I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for Alderman Jean Jean Francois. His brother passed away. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Rule.
Ram Kassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean Francois absent. Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez absent. We have approval of minutes, motion to approve the minutes of December 1st and November 17th, 2020, and January 4th, 2021 as submitted.
Motion by Alderman Ram Kassoon, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any comments? Rule.
Ram Kassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye. Correspondents?
We have one correspondence from the Howells Fire District. They would like to express their gratitude for the donation made towards the utility terrain vehicle and trailer that was purchased to protect the public using the reservoir trails.
All right, file it.
Okay, that's it for correspondence.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. For the good of the city, anyone want to address the council for the good of the city? Eileen, I understand you have a couple of people?
We do. The first individual we have is Alexi Fernandez. You are unmuted, go right ahead. You have three minutes.
Alexi, you got three minutes, Alexi.
So, my name is Alex Fernandez, general manager of one of the recycling centers in the Middletown area, and one of the individuals leading the charge against pollution and corruption in New York. I mean, if not here, then where? Not now, then when? One planet, one life. I want to talk today because I'm afraid what big money is doing to free speech. It started with the banning of the nut Alex Jones, but now even the ban demon president of the United States, which I'm not a fan of, but I'm no fan of Joe either. However, I am a fan of Constitution and freedom of speech. What we need right now are more, not less. I also want to talk about pollution, and while I'm proud of us for recycling and drinking a lot of water, there's a huge fracking power plant poisoning our, a lot of us try shutting it down before it opens, but our mayor pushed for it, even called it a little old. But at least the mayor got us a $10 million check. But a recent 2020 Coronel University.
Are you still there?
Overall, I believe the reason God put us on this world is to make it better, not to destroy and poison it. Whether it's poisoning, whether it's pollution or corruption, our fight for air and water isn't over yet, and we will keep fighting until we shut it down. Also, I want to talk about systemic racism. My father is an NYPD officer, and recently a Breck lives matter liar attacked my dad and gave him a concussion. But a few bad people do not invalidate the plight of the oppressed. We need more love, not less. I mean, look at the racial makeup of our police department. Last time I checked in 2017, our police were 90%, 91% white, yet our community is 30% white, 30% black, and 30% Hispanic. Our comp does not represent our community, and it is the gatekeeper's fault. While I respect the gatekeeper for his military service and for teaching math, him saying that it's the minority's fault for not pouring high enough should be enough for him to be removed. If it walks like a duck, then talks like a duck, then it's a duck. Therefore, because of personal responsibility and systematic racism, I'm asking for Joe Massey to resign or to be removed. Once again, thank you for your service. This is the problem of our day. Last week, I want to talk about the election. How is it that Kanye West got no vote in this huge state of New York? Well, I know one person who voted him in, and it's a experiment and a protest vote. We just know.
I know.
I think Trump would have still won. It is both corrupt Republicans and Democrats who silence the voices of those who want something different. If it's not rigging, then I don't know what it is. I believe we should be run by people who believe in math and science and law.
Alexi, you're better than that.
And big money. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else, Eileen?
Yes, we have a Ms. Vanessa Sid. Vanessa, you can unmute yourself.
Vanessa, you there?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Vanessa Sid here. I am now in Ward 2, and I'm so happy to see you all safe and healthy. Unfortunately, the reason why I am here today, as some of you may have heard, there are community members in our Ward 3 who are facing eviction under an eviction warrant warrant. It is illegal, it is unsafe, and it's very disappointing to see that happening when we have the resources available, but unfortunately they're limited. There has been some outreach and communication done to find the resources necessary. Unfortunately, it's gotten to the point where the landlord is now harassing the family, and the only form of communication between the landlord is happening through their 16-year-old daughter, who happens to be a high honor roll student, but unfortunately is having direct contact through text messages with the landlord, translating the horrible things and comments that he's saying. I'm disappointed to see that these resources weren't right away available on the City of Middletown page, and it's something that I would love to see. And I also wanted to come today and ask you all not to take a stance, but definitely read a little bit more on the bill that's currently in the State Senate. It's S-8802, and I will email all this after tonight's meeting. It's a bill that would not only cancel rent, but also cancel mortgage payments for small homeowners because it's something that we need. We were all hit by COVID. COVID did not discriminate, and unfortunately, a lot of folks are facing the same exact situation with the ones that I'm with today, but a lot of them are afraid to speak up because of their status, and that's something that should not be happening. I think it's something that the community should all stand behind, and in a few days, I know you will all be hearing about this through the news. But I did invite her children today to speak because they did want to speak from their own experience, what they're going through, and they would also love for you all to take into consideration the Senate bill, S-8802, and hopefully sign on in a letter of support and send to Albany, because right now it's stalling, and we really need it to pass. So right now here, I have Melissa who's going to introduce herself.
Good evening. I am Melissa Diaz. I'm 16 years old, and I've been having to deal with the landlord threatening my family, harassing them, him wanting us to get out of the house, and only giving us 30 days to move out. It's been very hard having to deal with the text messages, having to translate them to my parents, having to witness everything he's been saying, because he hasn't been very considerate about the situation that has been going on. It's very hard to be dealing with all this, and I hope you guys can please help us with everything that's going on right now. And the realtor has also not been helping as much. He's also been wanting us to get out, the same as the landlord, but I hope you guys can share this bill that Vanessa commented about, and thank you for taking your time and listening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other than Alex?
No, that is everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. Records of the mayor.
First, I'd like to agree with Alexi Fernandez, or that I'd like to see Mr. Massey step down also.
Why did he want me to step down? I didn't.
I don't know, something about you being a math teacher, but...
I thought it was because I was a veteran, and I was the only one, and he figured that he shouldn't have any veterans. I don't know.
I don't know. But in regards to the evictions, I'm not sure what they're really referring to, because the governor signed a bill on December 29th that prohibits and extended the eviction moratorium until May. So maybe if she wants to send more information, there is documentation that people have to follow. The fact that you have to prove that you are impacted by COVID, you can't just say that you're not paying your rent because I don't want to pay my rent. You have to have a COVID-related reason for doing so, and it doesn't forgive the rent. You eventually have to pay the rent at some point. So I'm not sure exactly what they're referring to, but I understand that the Biden administration is also going to extend the federal side until probably at least May or until the summer. So there are protections for them, but the tenant must file the appropriate documentation with the landlord, and the only people that can evict someone is the court. A landlord cannot turn off your water, they cannot turn off your electric, your heat, they cannot change the locks on your doors. So there is adequate protection in place, but they must bring it to the attention of the Commissioner of Public Works office, or you can call my office if you're being harassed by a landlord. But the first question that's going to be is that you need to provide the appropriate documentation. In fact, we recently had a case in which a tenant had water shut off at the curb. We, within a half an hour, responded to the call, contacted the plumber, made sure the water was turned back on, you know, there's excuses, and it ended up being an illegal conversion from a one-family to a two-family home, and the landlord did not have a permit for either unit, so it compounded more problems for himself. But we do react on landlord-tenant complaints, and there are protections in state law for the tenants. Jerry, you want to ask a question?
Yes, if this is the same issue that I spoke with Vanessa about, and Maria Bruni also helped, if it's the Lake Avenue one, it's not a question of paying the rent, because the rent has been paid, it's a question of the landlord just giving them the one less-than-a-months notice and that they have to be out. So we've sent them the numbers for legal services and other agencies and people to try and help, so maybe if they contact you too. But if it's the case that we've spoken about, that I've spoken about with her, then we have attempted to help and are still attempting to help.
Okay, but the fact is that regardless of whether it's non-payment of rent or whatever, a landlord just can't go in and change the locks.
Right.
The only people that can evict is a court.
A court.
So we can't stop a landlord from going through the process. For example, if someone's not paying their rent, and they're still working, and they haven't filed the proper documentation, then a judge can still evict that person. So the process is the court, it's not the city. We can't stop an eviction, but the facts will stop the eviction. When they go into court and they tell the judge, I filed the appropriate paperwork, I've been impacted by COVID, and the story goes on.
Well, that's why we tried to send links for legal assistance. That's what it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we don't offer legal assistance through the city, but Maria did say she had a note there that she did contact, offered you the information too.
Yes.
So we're on the same page, I guess, for that. But yeah, they need to contact possibly legal aid if they need representation, but eventually, you know, you can represent yourself in court too.
Yes.
And if you can't afford an attorney.
Mayor Alderman Johnson had a question.
Yes, sir.
When you say documentation, is there a form online somewhere, or is it just a...
Yeah, the state has a form that you can, and if they don't have access to it, then we can provide them with a copy, but they can go to the public library and do it. But there are questions, and the landlord is entitled to the proof that you've been impacted by COVID. How they define impacted by COVID, I don't know if it's solely by losing your job or your hours were cut, it could be family illness, there could be a lot of things. But the governor extended it till May in New York State, and there is also federal protection. But in New York State, you do need to file the forms.
But it sounds like in this case, the facts of the case are not entirely clear. This may not even be COVID-related.
Right. It may not be, it doesn't sound like it's rent-related, a lack of rent payment, it sounds like, but if they're being harassed to the point where it's inappropriate harassment, they should call the police department and file a report with the police department, and you could tell that, you know, the police will have to handle it as a police matter. But the, a landlord is not entitled to harass a tenant, especially if they're paying rent and they're occupying the building or the premises. But if they have any trouble, they can contact my office, and we'll bring them and sit them down with the police department also to address the harassment part of the issue. The, well, let me get into this part here. I'm just still in agreement with Mr. Fernandez.
You're disoriented, you're very disoriented.
I wish he'd called back so I could find out why I'm supposed to step down. I didn't hear it.
Here's the COVID, the COVID part.
Careful what you wish for.
We are up and have some pretty big numbers. By the way, I'm wearing my Green Bay Packer jacket tonight, because I wanted everyone to understand that the Green Bay Packers are playing this weekend, but Miguel's not here tonight because the Giants are not playing this weekend. But I'm hoping he's watching for just a couple of minutes and can root me in to the Super Bowl. I'd appreciate your help. But let's get back to COVID. We still have a serious problem in Orange County. New York State is, you know, still increasing, and the country is going crazy, and hopefully the craziness stops tomorrow. We'll, right now, vaccines have been frozen for the new vaccines. People who are getting a second dose are now into that cycle, so we're hoping from what we're hearing is possibly next week, there might be some vaccines for new people coming out. I encourage everyone to go to NY.gov, you can sign up, you can send your information, you can sign up for email contacts. There are sites online where they are giving vaccines if you qualify. Right now, the, I think Binghamton might have been the closest one to Middletown this morning, but they are going to open up more sites, state sites, federal government is talking about more sites. But in the meantime, please, everyone, follow the rules the best you can, and we are now into the Middletown Walk Hill area. We have two of the top three active cases for communities in the county, so please follow the direction as much as possible. The warming station update, you know, as COVID has affected a lot of things, it's also affected our hopes of getting in there very quickly. We, I wanted to give an update, I know Jerry and Andrew have been asking and have been pushing for it. As you know, we are using a quarter million dollar grant from the CARES funding, round two of the federal government. This outlines the process that we went through in November and early December, and we did receive the funds on December 28th. We cannot make any commitments until December 28th to go forward with the program until we had the receipt of the funds. So we did engage an architect on our own behalf in early November. The submission was December 28th of the preliminary plans. We met with the architect, Mr. Fuji, on January 5th. The bid opening for the work, for the majority of the work, will be January 28th, and the award will be as soon as we can after reviewing of the bid. The city and the Board of Estimant approved the lease on December 10th, and the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council, although they're okay with the lease, will be physically signing the lease on the 15th, or right around, right around now, they'll be signing the lease. So where does that leave us? Tonight, you'll be voting on a $50,000 fund balance transfer into this project. The money that we, under the CARES grant, was $250,000, that covers some administrative costs also. The cost estimates to do the whole building, to bring it up to certain standards, are in excess of $250,000. So the biggest problem that we had was the HVAC system. As you know, if you're familiar with the building, there was an add-on to the building many, many years ago, maybe 25 years ago. That system that was put into the addition is now shot. All the baseboards are gone, they're cracked, you know, was from many years of neglect, I guess, or freezing up, could have froze up over the winter. We don't know when it happened, but it did happen. And so any hope of just restarting the system went out the window. So the money that we are going to appropriate tonight from the Board of Estimant will address the immediate needs of plumbing and HVAC, and maybe some minor electrical work. The major part of the additional funding through the CARES grant will address the roof when appropriate, the wall, the retaining wall outside, the floor has to be done immediately, some of the kitchen work needs to be done. There's a lot of work to be done in the building in order to bring it up to the specs for the current needs, and then for what we hope to be long-term, a long-term arrangement with the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council. We are three, four weeks behind schedule. We've been informed by some of the trades that supplies and equipment are hard to get. I know personally, I've ordered some flooring, and Home Depot is about two, three weeks behind on when we were supposed to get our flooring for our house, so I've experienced firsthand, but we are still focused on it, and we will get it done immediately. After you approve the transfer tonight, I will sign it first thing in the morning, and we already have the plumber and the electrician on board, so we will direct them to begin work immediately. So that's the best I can do, but on that, Paul, did you want a question?
I just had a question. Is the capacity of 30, is that for the foreseeable future?
Yes, yes, and that's all they want. Yeah, that's all, the lease also limits it to 30, but that's all GMIC wants.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay. All right. The State of the City will be held on February 2nd, as Jerry pointed out, Groundhog Day. All right? And so we'll see how I see, what shadow I see. I didn't plan it that way until you just said that to me before, but we will be broadcasting on Channel 20. There will be no in-person, we're limited to public participation within the building. And believe it or not, I don't have much more than that, other than the police report that I all emailed you earlier today. That is the document that was adopted by the Special Commission under the guidance of the direction of Governor Cuomo. We will be making that document public, and it will go up on all of our social media for the public to review and for the council to review. We are required to hold a public hearing. Hoping that you can schedule the public hearing on February 16th, and that will give about a month for the public to review the document. People can submit written document, written input if they want, or they can speak at the public hearing, or do both, give written comments. The, I think if you're, we have to adopt it by April. I think if you're prepared to vote that night based on limited public input, and you feel free, comfortable to vote, that would be fine, but if you need another week or two after the public input, that would be fine also. We need to have it adopted and filed before April. So I would say the latest would be the first meeting in March would be to file the document. So whatever way you want to do that is fine with me. And I think it's more appropriate for us to have the questions back and forth in a public forum, when the chief will be able to address it and address the public hearing questions, and so if you have any questions that you would like to prepare for that, you can probably send them. If you need any information, data, not just questions, additional data that you would like that night, please give the chief ample time to gather the data, so we'll be prepared to move on it, have the hearing, address the questions, and then vote, hopefully very soon and shortly thereafter. So any other questions?
Any questions for the mayor? Mayor, thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Ours. All right, department heads. Economic Development, Maria Bruni, please.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we had a reorganizational meeting of the CDA Community Development Agency. To date, we've completed successfully nine properties. We put them back on the tax roll, we have new homeowners, new ownership, and we're on track to try to accomplish four in 2021. And tonight also, you have on the agenda the transfer of two properties, 54 Washington Street and 33 Lafayette Avenue, to the Community Development Agency, so we can start preparing those for the homeownership program as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? Maria, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire chief, Mr. Barber. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Alderman Green and Healy for their generous donation of a box of masks for us, for the fire department, greatly appreciated and needed. Second is, the fire department is still trying to get our first vaccine. Our first shot for the vaccine. We've tried, website has crashed, I've written emails. So far, we're still waiting. This week, we know it's a second dose, hopefully next week we can get some members in. Other than that, it's been a quiet month so far this month, and we're going to try and keep it that way.
Well, we certainly appreciate your attempts for the vaccine. Keep going, Nick. Hopefully it'll fall in place.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks.
And welcome and good luck the next four years. Anyone have any questions?
Three.
I'm sorry, your wife is probably going to throw something at me next three years. Any questions for Chief Barber?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Police chief, we want you.
Good evening, all. I have nothing this evening unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the chief? Wow.
Thank you.
Is it me? Superintendent of Recreation, Chris Brenkerhoff?
Good evening. I'm going to be just as short. You do have there for the mayor to approve the geese police that we use every year. That is a tremendous service to our parks. Without it, it's a mess, and they do a great job, and they're very fair. With the Davage Park expansion, they'll be getting done, that'll also be included in that price. So they do a great job. And the only thing I want to do, which I know you're going to be accepting a lot of donations, I said it last time, is thank the public for all the donations for these care packages. We continue to stay very busy. In fact, we get more phone calls all the time with people needing food, because the numbers are going up. We're just under, in donations, not even grants, $25,000. Another check for $2,500, again, came today from United Presbyterian's thrift shop that are always giving back as well. So we thank our entire community. It's amazing. That's all I have.
Any questions for Chris? Alderman Kleiner?
Sir.
Thank you. Chris, I noticed the geese police ask that we post signs saying, "Do not feed the waterfowl", and they also ask that we pass a local ordinance. They say it's helpful if there's a local ordinance against feeding the waterfowl.
There already is, and we do have signage up as well. The signage, however, gets torn down constantly. We have some people that refuse to obey that. We've even called the police up, and we find them feeding them bread, which is actually the worst thing for them. So, and I think there's an ordinance that was already put in place years ago.
I couldn't, I couldn't find it searching in code, maybe it's there, so...
It's state code or the federal code, because I can...
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be state or federal, but they ask, they ask also for a local ordinance, so...
Because I was once a guilty party, bringing my kids up there to feed the ducks when I, when they were little, and I never noticed the sign, and sure enough, there was signage up there. But I think a lot of people do it innocently, but maybe we need, but they were small signs too. So a local ordinance would be fine with me if you... So a local ordinance would be fine with me if you want to talk to Alex and give him the draft one, because it's damaging to the, from what I understand, to the birds.
Right, and it makes it hard for them, so they do recommend it.
Yeah, yeah, so if that's, that's okay with me, if you want to.
Okay, very good, thank you.
But we need to sign it adequately too.
Yes.
Not that little sign that the guy caught me with.
Or the little paper.
It wasn't an officer, it was a, it was a person who lived up by there and told me you were doing the wrong thing.
Is there statute of limitation on those crimes? Thank you, Chris. Public hearings and grievances?
Nothing this evening.
Petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
I thought we had some complaints earlier. I don't know. Okay, remarks of Alderman. Alderman Burr?
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Kleiner?
That makes it hard. First, I want to express my condolences to Alderman Jean-Pierre. This is the first I had heard of that, so I am really sorry to hear that and my condolences to his family. Today is the National Day of Remembrance, is what, I was trying to see what they call it. It's a candle lighting and other lighting around the country. It's a National Day of Remembrance for the 400,000 people who have now died from COVID. So they've asked, you know, everyone light a light, a candle, ring the church bells. But that happened today in DC at the National Mall, and so I think we should remember it. I went on the website the first day with the vaccines. I was in that 75 and up category, one you're happy to be in, but you're there. And so, you know, of course, I was eligible. And then you look at 10 miles, then you look at 20 miles, then you look at 30 miles, then you look at 40 miles. And they all, when you call, just go, basically, why are you calling? And they go, call back in February or March. So there is no vaccine. I mean, we need to remember that this past administration passed on 100 million doses and then that reserve supply they were going to release turned out to be a phantom. It's just not there. So we're hoping with the new administration that they can really ramp up production, but I still, before I came in, on the local, on the New York news, you see the ad from New York State for, "Sign up for your vaccine. It's easy and it's fast." It's not easy, it's not fast, and there is no vaccine, but they're still running the ads. So I don't know. It's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to understand. But we'll, we'll be patient. I mean, at least New Jersey puts smokers to the front of the line and something that I don't understand since that's a choice. For Middletown, my, what other, the other thing I would like to see, we have a lot of moratoriums, but I've been thinking about the people who, in our code, the zoning, and I'm doing this tonight because I, otherwise I would do it next, but I don't want to, you know, we usually focus on the mayor's State of the City, so this is my State of the City. When you, zoning expires, your grandfathering expires in one year. So if you have a building that's been vacant and you're working on it and you're repairing it or doing anything with it, after a year, if you're in a zone that's been changed or you're grandfathered in, then that's expired, then you have to go to the zoning board and prove hardship. I think we ought to have a moratorium on that expiration because people who've been trying to fix up properties, you weren't allowed to have work crews, you weren't allowed to have people out working on your properties, you weren't allowed. So I think it's something we should at least look at and.
We've been tolling it, Jerry.
What's that?
We're tolling that, we're not, if there's a legitimate.
Okay, I mean, that's.
If there's a legitimate issue, we're extending, we're extending the time. I don't know of any one case where someone has been impacted by the, by the, the one year non-conforming use issue. So if someone can demonstrate the same thing, we, I think it's dangerous to make a blanket change, but we are considering it on a case-by-case basis of.
Okay.
Someone's in a process of renovating a property and they're having the same problem that we're having with ordering furnaces and things like that, then we're taking that into consideration. But I haven't been informed of one case yet of where that's happened. Now, if you do it blanket, what you're doing is you're taking a large home that's been abandoned for many years. And I'll give you an example, 37 Broad Street is a former six-family, you know, very small apartments and stuff. That, under the theory of extending it, you know, just to everyone in a blanket, then you're opening that back up for that type of development. But on a case-by-case basis, we are doing it on a case-by-case basis. And so far, to my knowledge, and if you have any direct knowledge of anyone, please have them contact my office and we will, we will try to address it with them. But I think it's a dangerous thing to do with a blanket, but it is on a case-by-case. But they have to demonstrate. Again, the same thing with the COVID relief. You've got to demonstrate that you've been damaged, you've been hurt, you've been unable to do it, and we're taking all those things into consideration.
Okay. I mean, I'm thinking of, you know, at the zoning board, and there haven't been a lot of filings at the zoning board recently, maybe for that reason. But I had people call me in the summer who got stopped there trying to put siding on their home, gentleman on Linden Avenue, but he couldn't do it because code enforcement came out and told him he couldn't have two people working together. Well, that's kind of hard to put up siding with one person, so.
Well, that was a state, that was a state.
But that was an individual working on his own home, but I'm, I'm just thinking of the number of times when people.
But what does that have to do with the use? Putting up siding has nothing to do with the use of the building.
No, but if someone, if a building's vacant and someone is making repairs and then wants to re-rent it but has a lot of repairs, those cases have come up at the zoning board.
As I said, you've got to be careful because you're going to open it up and it's, and it's going to be uncontrollable. But they have to demonstrate. So if that building's been empty for three years and they bought a vacant building, and then, no, they wouldn't qualify because the building's been empty for three years.
Yeah, no, and I'm not talking about that.
But we, we have been taking it under consideration. People that have called, I've told them the same thing when, if they're having trouble with stuff, we'll extend their time limit if they can't meet the deadline. Everyone has met the deadlines, so there's been really no, no big issue that I'm aware of. But if you have a specific one, anybody on the council, then please feel free, we'll, we'll walk it through.
Okay, very good. The other thing I'm looking at is thinking ahead in terms of a traffic calming device on James Street because we're planning on, when we tear that building down, then straightening out that intersection so you'll have traffic coming straight up Canal Street and going right across to James Street where we have the handicap crossing for, from the James Street parking lot for City Hall and the courts and the police station. And then a little farther down, in the future, we'll have the crossing for the Heritage Trail. So I'd like to see us think about some kind of traffic.
Understand, with the traffic pattern, the changes, you're going to have push buttons at all those intersections. You're going to have crossing, just like in New York City or a larger city, you're going to push a button and it's going to tell you when to cross. It's not just putting up traffic lights. This is all the, especially in the higher pedestrian areas.
Right, but I mean the crossings where they're in the middle of the street, you know, the one from the James Street lot to City Hall, the handicap one, and then the one from, it's going to be further down for the.
We have a traffic consultant, I'll mention it to them, but I don't, you know, it's very close to the, to the intersection here. But that, the James Street, West Main Street intersection is going to have a pedestrian crossing push button. So they'll be, it'll be ADA compliant, so for people who have a hearing disability or sight disability, they'll be able to also cross safely. It's the state-of-the-art stuff. It's a $21 million project throughout the city between the sidewalks and the crossings. But we will mention it to the consultant.
Okay. All right. I did say at the last meeting that we were hoping that the next day, or that, that day, actually, we had met on Monday, so it was the next day that the two Democrats, if they won in Georgia, that we would be having a Democratic Senate. So we're hoping that we'll get some federal aid. So I still hope strongly, and the mayor had mentioned that, and the governor today mentioned that, we're depending on federal aid for the state and for the city budget. And so I, I hope that will happen. I did also, back in December, remind people that sedition was a crime, and I think you maybe see what I was talking about from two weeks ago on Wednesday. And I actually took a course in that Senate parliamentarian's office. And to see it trashed the way it was and to see people attacking our Capitol when our, not politicians, our elected officials were there, actually trying to do the self-governing for this country, a country, you know, based on the proposition that all men are created equal. And we had the Civil War where Lincoln said, "We're now testing whether that nation or any nation so conceived or so dedicated can long endure." Well, this is another great test. We haven't had anything like this since the War of 1812, when the owner of that building at 42 West Main Street was up guarding our northern border with the Republican Blues in the War of 1812. So we do have direct connections to that. There was an attempt to steal the election, obviously. Hopefully, that attempt has been put to rest. There's absolutely nothing, nothing whatsoever to indicate that the election was anything but free and fair. Biden was ahead in the polls for the whole time of the election, all summer, all fall he was ahead in the polls. Trump's approval rating never went up. Why in the world would you think that the election wasn't fair? And it's that big lie and the big lie technique that got people to go to storm the Capitol to try and change the results of the election and overturn it. I'm sorry to take a lot of time on it, but you know, QAnon and the Boogaloo Boys and the Proud Boys, when do we want to go back to having white supremacists ruling this country and ruling it by intimidation and force and mob rule? We're a democracy, a democratic republic, and I've often said, "I'm a Democrat, small D." And I'm going on because what, what happened two weeks ago was disgraceful and I'm hoping that we'll get past it and start to heal. Thank you.
You done?
I'm done.
Alderman Ramconsoo.
Amen, Jerry. Good job. I just wanted to say to the kids going back to school, once again, this crazy, crazy school year, that I wish them all luck and I hope it goes well. It's been a chaotic year. I think everyone's just trying to muddle their way through it and I just want to say we're like halfway, so woo-hoo. I feel like the new year really starts tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to that as well and everyone stay safe and I hope we see our vaccines come in to keep our first responders safe and healthy. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. Hours to go to a new beginning. Let's see how it works out. With respect to Vanessa and her colleague that spoke earlier, I hope they were listening long enough to realize this, you take the mayor's advice and contact City Hall and see what their, what kind of relief they can have with respect to their landlord-tenant situation. Thank you.
Alderman Green.
Thank you. I too, just want to extend my thoughts and condolences to Alderman Jean-François. He's not only a colleague, but a friend. So our thoughts and prayers are with you. Just looking forward to tomorrow, watching one of the, one of the great events of America go down, regardless of party. It is ceremonious and a joyous event, and I just look forward to, to watching our government in action and seeing how, how America does things. So that's it. Everyone, just please, you know, continue to wear your masks, wash your hands, socially distance. You know, vaccines are coming slowly, but hopefully surely, but you know, we're, we're going to round this bend, we're going to get through it. And soon enough, we'll all be packing the beautiful Festival Square again. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
I'd like to echo Alderman Kleiner's, you know, condemnation of the, you know, the attempted interference with the peaceful transfer of power. I think it was one of the, you know, the greatest, one of the most powerful nations in the world, we can be proud that we're transferring power to the 46th president. And also recognizing the fact that we have historic, you know, first female vice president. So this is a very historic election and I plan on listening to the, is it the accepted? No, the speech tomorrow. And like I have for every president, Republican or Democrat, so I think it's a very important day, like Alderman Green said. Thank you.
My only comment, Alexia, I don't want to disappoint you, but I'm not going anywhere. All right, unfinished business.
Nothing to say.
New business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Resolution to authorize the Treasury to transfer $1,240 within the 2020 Recreation and Parks Department for repairs of equipment.
All right, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any comments? Roll.
Ma'am Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the tri-state geese, geese police contract to control the geese population in Watts Memorial Park, Maple Hill Park, and Fancher Davage Park, including park expansions.
All right, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any comments? Roll.
Ma'am Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ramconsoo. Resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Fusco Engineering for SWP P P inspections of new athletic fields.
Isn't there more on to that? We have. Which funding for this agreement has been approved in the Capitol project line on that resolution?
On this one, sir. SWPP.
All right. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ramconsoo. Any comments? Roll.
Ma'am Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Ramconsoo, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an amended PERMA agreement.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Ramconsoo, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any comments? Roll.
Ma'am Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any comments?
Roll.
Ma'am Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Resolution to accept a total of $18,611.38 donations for the food and supply fundraiser during the COVID-19 pandemic.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any comments? Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the people who donated very generous, a lot of donations. And for both of these resolutions, a lot of outpouring, as, as Chris Brinkerhoff has said, it's a lot of support, so we thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kleiner. Any other comments? Roll.
Ma'am Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes. $10,000. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Resolution to authorize the Treasury to transfer $10,700 within the 2021 budget to cover the expenses associated with the Black Dirt Sewer Project.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any comments? Roll.
Ma'am Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Resolution passes.